Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this November 9th meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those who are willing and able, please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we humbly thank you for your love and mercy with the beginning of a new chapter in our nation's history. May we be united and faithful to you. As we approach Veterans Day, we ask a special blessing on those who have served in our country's armed forces. We ask, oh God, that their lives and their families are bountifully blessed and that we, as a community, continue to demonstrate our appreciation and admiration for those who serve our country. It was the wisdom in the matters before us this evening. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Mr. Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir. Item 13.05 was added to your agenda.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
That's great. All right, Commissioner Gil Ziffer will present a proclamation recognizing November 2016 as Florida Adoption Month. Zach.
Everybody, would you please give a big round of applause for my good friend Zach Gibson, because he doesn't know whether to come up or not. He said to me beforehand, I want a formal introduction, Gil, so was that working for you? Did I embarrass you accordingly? Oh, well, I'll keep trying. Whereas adoption provides a unique opportunity to improve children's lives and enrich the lives of adoptive parents, their families, and their communities. And whereas every child needs and deserves a loving, supportive, nurturing, and permanent family. And whereas approximately 24 children are currently available for adoption without an identified adoptive family in the Big Bend area, including teenagers, sibling groups, and children with medical needs. And whereas 103 children in the Big Bend area found forever families during fiscal year 2015 and 16. And whereas the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, Department of Children and Families, Big Bend Community Based Care, Heart Gallery Big Bend, local agencies and organizations join together to raise awareness of foster care adoptions in Florida. And whereas on November 18th, 2016, the city of Tallahassee will celebrate National Adoption Month, and families and children across the Big Bend area will celebrate the joy of adoption on this day and throughout the month, while remembering our children who are still dreaming and hoping for a loving, permanent family of their own. And whereas the city of Tallahassee will celebrate National Adoption Month and Florida Adoption Month through 30 Days of Amazing Children on the Explore Adoption website at www.adoptflorida.org. And whereas, adoptive families, including relatives and grandparents, who have already adopted, may benefit from continued post-adoption support services in the days and year ahead. Now, therefore, I, Gil Ziffer, or our mayor, Mayor Andrew Gillum, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing November 2016 as Florida Adoption Month, and urge all residents of the city of Tallahassee to consider opening their hearts and homes to children in this area who are in need of a forever family. Zach.
Commissioner Ziffer, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you all very much for your support. It is a great honor to be here to have the city of Tallahassee recognize Florida Adoption Month, National Adoption Month. On any given day, there's approximately 800 children in our state that seek a forever family. These children have come into care no fault of their own and truly could benefit from a family that can provide the health support and nurturing that they need so that they can grow up successful, to be ready to achieve their full potential. It's great that the city recognizes it. It really means a lot to us, and we certainly encourage everyone throughout the city of Tallahassee to please consider opening your hearts and homes to these children that not only needed to be adopted, but more importantly, who need a great family through, by being a great foster parent. That is truly a need within our state, certainly in this community, and we encourage everybody to consider. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions anybody may have if they, if they choose to desire to get more information. So, thank you all very much. It's a great honor. Thank you so much.
Now, I want to invite Commissioner Curtis Richardson for a special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as I plan for my own retirement, it is an honor to be able to recognize the retirement staff of the city of Tallahassee for a very special award, which they had briefed me on just the other day, as a matter of fact. And so I would, at this time, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission and leadership team, I'd like to invite the retirement staff from the Treasurer Clerk's office to join me at the podium. I understand, Wesley, you're going to join us? You're not, okay, all right. Okay. The Communicator Award is one of the leading international award programs recognizing big ideas in marketing and communication. Founded over two decades ago, the Communicator Awards receives over 6,000 entries from companies and agencies of all sizes, both government and private. The award is sanctioned and judged by the Academy of Interactive and Visual Arts, an invitation-only group consisting of top-tier professionals from acclaimed media, communications, advertising, creative, and marketing firms. As part of the city's recent record-keeping transition from prudential retirement, the city of Tallahassee retirement staff partnered with our new provider, Empower Retirement, to create an outreach and communication plan that would keep our participants involved in the changeover. For this initiative, the city received two separate 2016 ABA Communicator Awards of Distinction. The first was for web design. This award recognized the pre-transitioned custom website for design, look and feel, and ease of use for participants. This website later was used in, as the custom sign-on portal from which city participants continue to access their accounts. The second award for our integrated transition campaign was for our integrated transition campaign. This award recognized the city of Tallahassee and Empower for the business-to-consumer communications that went into the entire transition project. Introduction letters, transition bulletins, website development, and multiple onsite participant seminars were highlighted. Congratulations to the city of Tallahassee retirement staff on this transition campaign and on award-winning Start With the City's new partner, Empower Retirement. Thank you all so much. And these are the shiny trophies, Academy Awards, that they were presented. So, thank you all so much.
Would any of you, Daryl, would you like to? Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll say something briefly, mainly Angel will, but thank you very much, Commissioner, Mayor, and Commissioner for that. Retirement staff did put a lot of work into this during the transition campaign, many hours with Empower to ensure that the communication with our participants went well and that everybody was in the know. We had, the last thing we wanted was for someone not to know what was going on. Transitioning from a vendor we had been with for 20-plus years is always challenging. So, wanted to recognize some of our staff that were involved, Kim Kilgore and Tawana Morris, two of the managers in my division, and Valisa McGee, one of the analysts that works in my division. And mainly, wanted to give Angel Charlton the chance to say thank you. She led the team on this, and she's the one that put most of the boots-to-the-ground work together here. So, I want to give her a chance to say thank you as well.
I wanted to say thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, staff, to not only the retirement office, but also the retirement administrator, Daryl Thompson, Jr., and my supervisor, Kim Kilgore, as well as Jim Cook, the Treasurer Clerk, for entrusting me with this big task. It was a task. It was a very exciting task, but I want to make sure that not only is our staff recognized, but also the city of Tallahassee as well, because with the directors, the division heads, and also the benefit coordinators, the locations, and ensuring that the staff we needed was provided, they helped with that a lot. So, I just want to say thank you to them as well.
Thank you all again. That was a tremendous transition for, for so many city employees. I had to get most used to not throwing away the mail, Daryl, because it didn't look like the, the old retirement mail, right? Exactly. Moving on to the next presentation, I'd like to invite Mr. Jesse Dumas to join me up here. How are you? This is a proclamation recognizing and congratulating the farm credit of Northwest Florida on reaching the Farm Credit Systems' Centennial on July 17th, 2016. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas agriculture is a $100 billion industry in the state of Florida, and is the second-largest industry in this state, employing more than 2 million workers, farming nearly 300 commodities from citrus to sweetcorn to beef cows to broilers," man, we about to eat, feeling hungry, "honey to horticulture. And whereas farm credit in Northwest Florida has been providing reliable, consistent credit and financial services to farmers and rural communities for 100 years, through the good times and the bad times, and is poised to continue providing those services for many, many more years to come. And whereas farm credit of Northwest serves 881 customers in the state of Florida, and whereas agriculture touches on the daily lives of all of our citizens of this great state, from the food on their tables to the clothes on their backs. And whereas the city of Tallahassee, Florida, supports agriculture in the notable mission of farm credit system set by Congress 100 years ago. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, do hereby recognize and congratulate farm credit of Northwest Florida on reaching the Farm Credit Systems' Centennial Anniversary on July 17th, 2016." Please give them a hand.
I just want to say the Farm Credit System really appreciates the time and, and the recognition today. And if there's anything anybody ever needs, we'd love to help you out in any way we can. Thank you again.
All right, Commissioners, we're now on our agenda. And first up, we'll have speakers who are here to speak on agenda items. Treasurer Clerk, are there any speakers?
Mayor, we may have one. I have a couple of speakers on un-agended items, but Elizabeth Wilson has filled out a speaker form, but I don't know if that's on a particular item already on our agenda, or if that's a general remark for the benefit of the commission. Okay. If it's a general remark, we'll take those speakers at, at the end. At this point, we have several items on our agenda. Speakers who wish to comment on those may do so now by bringing me a form. And absent seeing any of those, Mayor, we'll have several speakers at the un-agended portion of our meeting following the policy session.
Okay. Thank you very much, Treasurer Clerk. Commissioners, we're now on overview of the city of Tallahassee Airport Advisory Committee. We've got Mr. Ron Greenstein, who is a board member, and obviously Mr. Chris Curry, our Director of Airport Operations. City Manager, any introductory?
No, sir.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, appointed officials. I'm here to introduce Ron Greenstein. He's the chairman of the advisory, the Airport Advisory Board Committee, and he's here to provide you with an overview of that committee. And he's been appointed to the board since 2012.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. First of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank the Mayor for reappointing me and thank the city commissioner, too, for all their gardens and, and Mr. Fernandez, who I had the privilege of breaking bread with, and Broward chasing JetBlue, which was always a fun thing to do.
Are they chasing you back?
You know something? That is what we're hoping for in the beginning of the year, and I'll touch that in a second. You know, as a former elected official, I love when people get up here, and of course, when they're doing the offering. So, I was thinking about starting a committee, the National Adopter Former Elected Official Club, but, but no one on this board deserves to be on it. I'm the only one that deserves to be on it. If you, how do I skew over? You could, first of all, the advisory board and the truth, if I could do this in five minutes, I'll be impressed. Usually Curtis, Commissioner Richardson knows, five minutes is usually just to clear your voice in the legislature. Established by the commission in June of 94, let me get to the real points of this. This is the basic background of the board history. Chris, you can move it along. One of the things you do, the board composition, the only one thing we're asking you to change on the board is a board of 18. There's a couple of permanent members. They have the Chamber of Commerce. They also have Visit Tallahassee. Today, we discussed the new Office of Economic Vitality. We'd love that to be appointed, too, as a permanent appointment. I believe that, once you hear the numbers of what the economic tool is at the airport, it would be good to have them at that table, because they sit behind us and they should be at the table in helping us understand that. That would be one thing that we look for. Each member's, it's voluntary, unpaid. It's a three-year term. You have to live within the, you have to live within the market area, the airport, and you have no, no interest within any of the businesses out there making money there. The bylaws also were updated to call the international status. We just touched that. The new bylaws located on the airport website. The next list you'll see is the members right now. Hopefully, we can add one more from the Vitality Committee, and I'll always mispronounce that. We meet every two months. What do we do? What is, that's the question. And that's funny, because today, one of the new board members said, okay, so what do we do? And, and the question came up is that the status of the airport and how we handle ourselves, sometimes we're the, we're the cheerleaders, and sometimes we're the ones who say, wait, prior administration, some of the ideas would be, how about a gondola that would go from the airport to here? And we would say why. You know, we would try to stop ideas like that before they would get to you. The other things that we would do is, and yeah, you're smiling, because you had to deal with that. Yes, we had to deal with that. But the funny thing is, the real issue is that the discussion on the International Airport was real strong. And, and I was one of the ones, why would we want to be an international airport? What, what would a regional airport become an international airport? Good thing is that the discussion was, was centered around the amount of freight that would come through here. It had nothing to do with international passengers. We hope one day it would. But the amount of freight, the property we have out there doing a foreign trade zone, which would make that freight of International Airport work even better. So, we, we all stood for it. We all pushed for it once we understood the values. So, when we changed the name, when you all changed the name to the International Airport, we took heat, you took heat, people saying, why would you do that? It's not going to happen. But what we understand about the seafood industry and the amount of people that are dealing with the MAGLab, there's a tremendous amount of economic development that can happen. You'll see in one of the slides yet, in a few minutes, to show you how much more it is. One of the biggest things, and you can skip another, you can skip over, the board accomplishments, probably the biggest one, and we're not taking credit for it. I'm not going to take Ron Sacks, Sacks Communications credit, but I have to tell you, I applaud the city commission for getting involved with the JetBlue campaign. I have never seen a community, and I've been through a few of them, as turned on to, to get together as a group and commit $2 million when FSU matches what we put up, and then the ability to, to excite Broward County into doing that. I don't know if Ali Fleming's here, but I have to tell you, probably the most tenacious staffer you have, besides the people at the airport, to work on this JetBlue, the JetBlue program, she was wonderful. I thank, I thank you all for letting Commissioner Maddox be the point person and push us around when, you know, when we're too slow to make sure we get moving around in Broward. City Manager knows, he hustled us everywhere we can do. I see Paige Carter, Paige was those down there, and there's a few other people. And I, and I was just a participant. You know, I had the joy of sitting with them. Some of the things we're working on is 120-acre solar, 20-acre solar farm that's going to be developed out there. I think you all are going to be able to claim a great victory in, in your electrical program. The lease money is going to go to help reduce the overhead at the airport, and we applaud you. Next one is probably the most important. This is done in 2014, this, this slide. It gets updated every three or four years, and this is NFDOT, Florida Department of Transportation. What's the value of Tallahassee Airport? When you look in 2014, the value is over 3,600 jobs. We believe this is about 20 to 25 percent, understated because of the growth factor. You're looking at annual payrolls of $115 million and the economic output of $400 million. And as I said, this is a 2014. We talked today about getting updates on this one, because I believe this is in excess of a half a billion dollars. I love using that number instead of 500 million, because it throws everybody off. The, the future, the future issues for consideration, Capital Circle Expansion, it's going to be full lane. A lot of people complain that it's six miles away from I-10. A lot of businesses complain. Well, we have to do the best we can to get the infrastructure out there when it comes to trucks, if we do expand there. A lot of airports are right close to an interstate. We don't believe it's a hindrance. We believe once this program is done, we're expanded out there. The airport master plan's coming up for another 20-year future development. And maintaining and recruiting, and this is key, maintaining and recruiting commercial air service, that is the one thing I hear when I say I'm on the Airport Advisory Board. I hear nothing else. Well, one, I hear about how one's terrible, but we're not going to get into that. But when you look at 19 flights per day, in and out of here, serving seven destinations, and the three most important destinations we need are Fort Lauderdale, Baltimore, Washington, and New York. Those are the three that every poll and every, and this is one poll that is not inaccurate, because every time we talk to people, they absolutely say, those are the three destinations they want to get to when they leave here, to fly here, to come back here. Let me close by telling you that there are, we are working with American Airlines to try to increase service out of here, and United to try to do service to Houston Hobby. I will make one statement on the JetBlue, because this is the question. We, we have been told that a decision will be made early next year. And understand why this is such a difficult decision. Why, why do you keep pushing it back? If you've known what's going on in Fort Lauderdale, they're building, every time they open a new gate for JetBlue, it's their second-biggest hub in the entire world behind JFK. They have 90 flights a day leaving Fort Lauderdale. Every time they get a new gate, they look at the most valuable piece of property where they'll go. They just put San Diego, Fort Lauderdale, Seattle, Fort They just put San Diego, Fort Lauderdale, Seattle, Fort Lauderdale. And when we look at it, they keep telling us two things that we need to find: equipment, and we've got to find a gate. So we believe that we can have this service, we've discussed this, starting August, September of next year, with some decision by the beginning of this year. Usually takes them six months. I thank you for letting me sit on the Board. I thank you for giving me the opportunity. And Commissioner Miller, thank you for requesting this earlier this year, to make us come here and tell us what you do. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much, Ron, for your commitment and your service...
Thank you, sir.
...to the airport, obviously. Commissioners, any questions? Chris, anything to add? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Thank you all very much. Commissioners, we're now on to our consent agenda. If there are no items to be...
Move consent.
Move second.
There's a motion and a second to approve consent. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now to introduction of ordinances. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two ordinances for introduction tonight. Item #12.01 is ordinance #16-0-30. It's the first and only public hearing for this item will be scheduled for December 14, 2016, at 6:00 at our chambers here in City Hall. The ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, Repealing Article II of Chapter 18, Entitled Occupational License Business Tax of the Code of General Ordinances, Providing for Conflict Several Built-In Effective Date." Again, this is the repeal of the occupational license business tax, and it will be up for public hearing, the single public hearing, on December 14. Item #12.02 is ordinance #16-Z-25. It's the first, there will be first and only public hearing scheduled for December 14, also at 6:00 p.m. in the Commission's chambers. It is an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, Designated Including Additional Territory As and In a PUD Plan Unit Development on the Official Zoning Map of the City of Tallahassee, Adopted and Established by the City Commission and Provided a Separate Date." If I could have item #1201 and #1202 introduced, please.
Show them introduced without objection. Commissioners, we're now onto the policy formation and direction. Item 13.01, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 13.01 seeks your approval to accept the United States Department of Justice Community-Oriented Policing Services Grant.
Move Option 1.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for Option 1. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this is a great opportunity for us to be able to put more law enforcement officers on the street, particularly utilizing the community-oriented policing strategy that the Chief has implemented in the Department. But what I wanted to bring up, because there is a fiscal impact, or will be a fiscal impact of this for the city, particularly after the third year, when the grant runs out and we are asked to absorb these positions, and I just wanted to point out that in my conversation with the City Manager as to how we would accomplish that, it's my understanding that these positions, at that time, will be rolled into the city budget. And that's how we will pay for the ongoing cost of those additional 15 positions.
That's correct. Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thank you for pointing that out. I think this Commission has demonstrated consistently over these last three years our commitment on addressing crime and also the shortage on the law enforcement side, and having, I think, a number of us gone to those graduations. Not only are they doing a great job getting those positions filled, but the classes are looking increasingly diverse, which is, as a result of affirmative actions, affirmative steps taken by the staff to recruit those folks, create a special training program out at Pat Thomas, and graduate those folks right and directly into our police force. Commissioners, there's a motion and a second on this item. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.02.
Yes, sir. Item 13.02 is a policy review of City Commission Agenda Items. We go through these reviews periodically of all our city's policies and procedures, and we're recommending updates to policies related to the agenda process for City Commission meetings, Policy #112. Public participation for meetings, Policy #108, and processes for ceremonial recognition at City Commission meetings, Policy #114. The proposed edits are to codify existing practices, eliminate defunct practices, and improve the exchange of information between the City Commission, staff, and our citizens. Raul Levin is here to respond to any questions that you may have on specific edits.
I'm moving the item.
There's a motion and a second on the item. No questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.03.
Thank you, sir. Item 13.03 is an update on the Substation #12 Reliability Project and our public engagement. This item updates you about that project on the TMH campus and the related public engagement activities. Rod McGarrett is here to provide a brief overview.
See if I can get the... There it is. Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. Wanted to bring you up to date on where we are with this reliability project. As you may recall, you approved in the budget the addition of two 9.5-megawatt distributed generating units at the substation that's located adjacent to the hospital. The reason for putting these generating units there is, we try to have two transmission lines that feed each substation for reliability purposes. This substation only has one. It serves a lot of critical facilities in the area. There's no easy way to get a second transmission line into that substation, so it'll enhance the reliability. And then, along with the decision and the approval you gave us in September for the replacement generation project, this is part of our continued modernization of our generation fleet to improve the fuel efficiency and reduce the environmental signature of our generation, and become more prepared for the changes in our industry with more renewables and intermittent resources. Give you a feel for where it is. This is Centerville Road, Surgeon's Drive. This is the hospital complex. Our substation is right here, and there's an old stormwater pond right adjacent to the substation that's not being used any longer for stormwater. The hospital's actually in the process of getting ready to clear that area, fill that stormwater pond in, and do some roadwork on Medical Drive as part of the tower project. We're working with them, so it's prepared for our construction, once they're done with that work. So we're collaborating closely with them on the work they're doing there. This is a picture of one of the units...
Quick question, quick question, Rob. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Rob, could you go back to that slide, please?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we've had all that controversy last summer about what our substations look like and so on. I know you think they're very beautiful, but you know, it's not always. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I was wondering, you know, you said they were getting ready to clear, and I was wondering if there's a possibility to leave this buffer along the road, and what kind of roadwork are they getting ready to do there, exactly?
As I understand it, they are doing a slight widening of Medical Drive to add a turn lane, so the trees along the road are going to have to come out. We need them out, too, as part of the project, because of the footprint of the facility. We are spending a lot of energy, and that will equate into money on both the aesthetics and the noise for this facility, to try to have it blend in as much as we possibly can to that community there. So it's not just going to be a metal building plunked out there, industrial-looking. It'll have some industrial feel to it, because you can't get away from it, but we're going to do what we can from an aesthetics perspective to soften that around. And we're working with the hospital on some of that, too, to make sure we're coordinating with some of the other buildings that they've got in the area there.
When they do this type of side, this roadwork, do they put sidewalks in along there?
My understanding is there's going to be an expanded sidewalk along Medical Drive there.
All right. Thank you. How beautiful.
This is a picture of one of the generating units. There'll be two of these at this site. They'll actually be in a building. You won't see them unless you're in the building, but that gives you a feel for what one of these generating units look like. It's an internal combustion engine. It's like a big diesel engine, only it's burning natural gas. Why we're here before you tonight is we're starting the public discussions with the neighborhoods of this project. In fact, we met a week or so ago with the officers and some of the residents of the Benton Hills Neighborhood Association. They're the most closely affected neighborhood association to this facility. So we've started that discussion with them. We're going to have an open house on the 12th of December, which will have a broader audience that we will be inviting people from around, that live around the substation on both the north and south side of the hospital, to come out and meet with our team and talk about, in an open house setting, talk about what we're doing. TMH, we've been coordinating with them. They're going to be involved in those discussions. As we typically do for projects like this, we'll have a webpage that'll have project information, and then a living frequently-asked questions document. As we get asked questions, we'll populate it to start with, with those questions we have been asked or know we're going to get asked. And then, as we've done with some of our prior power supply projects, we'll have a dedicated email address and phone line where people can send email questions or comments to us, or phone in and leave voicemails. We'll monitor it, and then turn around and respond to those customers with the information that they're asking for. We wanted you aware that we're going to be out in the community having that discussion, so that if you all get contacted, you'll know what's going on and won't be surprised with the information. And I'll answer any questions you might have on the project or the process we're going into.
Commissioners, any questions? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
It's just...
Accept the report?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you, Rob.
Aye, thank you.
Were there any other questions? Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.04. City Manager.
I'll take that, Mayor. That's from the Treasurer Clerk's office. Wesley Hall is our Revenue Division Director, and we've asked him to bring to you an update on how our utility customers who receive Mr. McGarrett's fine services pay, and how those patterns have changed over time.
Thank you, Jim. Let me get one second and get everything up and going, please. One second.
As he's reloading his item, Commissioners, I'll remind some of you that this presentation's about how people pay, but some of you may remember, we moved a location, probably 2005, we relocated from City Hall to the Renaissance Center, which was a change in where people go, but really didn't change how we pay. So what this update will do is give you some information about methods of payment and really kind of increased options for those.
Thank you. What we did is, I'm Wesley Hall. Good afternoon, Mayor Gillum, City Commissioners, Mr. Fernandez. I'm the Revenue Officer, as Jim said. This presentation I'm sharing with you today will provide an overview of the changes in the payment patterns that have occurred over the past 10 years from our utility customers. We'll begin with fiscal year 2006, and we'll go up to fiscal year 2016. Also, we'll highlight in the middle, we'll highlight the period of fiscal year 2011. And as you'll notice, in-person payments were 10% of payments in 2006. Drive-thru payments were 13% of payments. Also, a special note, the drive-thru closed in January of 2010. Mail-in payments led all payments, with nearly half of all payments being mailed in. 47% is the exact number of what was mailed in. Global Express has 18 locations. You'll see that as showing 00 in 2006. We put this on there for consistency, but you'll see that in the next slide, Global Express actually opened up and started taking payments for us. In 2006, electronic payments only accounted for 25% of payments. This would change significantly over the next 10 years. In-person payments at the Renaissance Center were 12% during fiscal year 2011. And also note that we moved from City Hall into the Renaissance Center in 2005. The drive-thru location on North Monroe Street closed in January of 2010, therefore no transactions occurred. Mail-in payments began its downward trend in 2011, reaching 33% compared to 47% in 2006. Global Express, which began with 10 locations in April of 2009, and increased to 18 locations, I'm sorry, began with 10 locations in 2009, increased to 18 locations in 2011, measured 5.1%. Locations include FSU Credit Union, Tallahassee Leon Federal Credit Union, and King Food Store, to name a few. Again, there are 18 locations. This began in January of 2010. These are easily accessible locations, only minutes away from all of our customers. Electronic payments showed a jump to 48% in 2011, nearly double that of 2006. During 2016, in-person payments at the Renaissance Center totaled 11%. The drive-thru facility closed in January of 2010, so no transactions occurred. Mail-in payments continued to decrease, dropping to only 24%. Global Express remained pretty consistent in 2016 at 4%, with 19 locations conveniently located across the city. And as you noticed, we added one location, going from 18 to 19. However, in 2016, electronic payments soared to over 60% of payments. The side-by-side charts show that the City of Tallahassee customers had shifted their payment patterns over the past decade to electronic payments. Electronic payments jumped from 25% in 2006 to 6% in 2016, an increase of nearly 35%. During that same period, mail-in payments dropped from 47% to 23%, a 24% decrease. This transaction is driven by the Revenue Division's continued focus on guiding customers to electronic methods for ease of use, flexibility, and convenience. There are also more COT customers that are technologically savvy than ever before. Electronic payments are by far the most cost-effective way for the City of Tallahassee to receive payments. We anticipate that this pattern will continue, and by 2020, we think we'll have nearly 70% of all of our payments coming in electronically, if not more. Finally, two additional payment methods were added in 2016. The first was E+ Mobile, which will continue to add to the rise in electronic payments. The second addition was the E+ Kiosk, which began operation in August of 2016. It offers customers the option of paying with cash, credit, or debit card, or check. The Revenue Division will continue to search for additional payment options for all of its customers. The final chart simply shows the different methods that you can make your payments. There's a vast array, so if anybody wants to pay in a number of different ways, we think we can cover pretty much any payment method that you want, from automatic bank draft to E+ Kiosk. Any questions?
Do you have a sense of how many of our customers are paying at 30 days past? At what point is the cutoff? How many days, generally, for residential?
About 37 days.
About 37 days. So I'd be interested to know, using these methods of payment, my guess would be, most of the folks who are waiting till the last minute are showing up and paying at the location itself.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's what happens in most cases. And I'll be happy to do a little research and get those numbers.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know what percent of our customers are going beyond the due date.
Yes, sir.
And paying their bills, and then for those folks, what method they're using.
Okay.
If it wouldn't be too difficult, just because I think it's a barometer of how our economy's doing, is if you could provide some historical data, let's say, what, 2010?
Time to go over it, yeah.
2010, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Every couple of years even, just so we can see what, if there is a trend, if, you know, people are more current now, if they're the same, just to give us an idea.
Okay, I can do that for you.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Any other questions?
Commissioners, any other questions?
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much, very helpful. Commissioners, we're now on item, excuse me, 13.05.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into this item, although it is of general application and not specific application, due to a request pending that could involve me coming before this process, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself and leave the room during the deliberations.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, item 13.05 is an attempt to establish a policy whereby the Mayor and City Commission can consider, will have a process to consider and be the judge of the election and qualification of its own members, which is a provision in our city charter. Complaint was filed on September 13th, 2016, in Circuit Court in Leon County alleging that Commissioner Maddox is not a resident of the city and is therefore not eligible to serve as City Commission, beginning the term November 21st of this year. However, as indicated, the city charter provides in Section 13 that the committee shall be the judge of the election and qualifications of its own members. On October 27th, Circuit Judge Charlie Dodson stayed the court case that had been filed to give the commission an opportunity to address the issues, and the commission needs to adopt a process to address the residency issues or in the future, any other issues that would deal with the election or qualification of members of the City Commission. The recommendation is that, coming from the city attorney, that is indicating the agenda item, that we ask you to authorize the city attorney to retain an experienced attorney to serve as special master for the commission. Two, require that special master to promptly schedule and conduct a hearing on the relevant disputed issues, and giving the special master the full authority to decide and/or establish all procedural and pre-hearing issues. Three, require the special master to allow the parties to present sworn testimony and documentary evidence to support their respective positions. Four, to require the special master to prepare and issue a report and recommendation to the commission, setting forth findings of relevant facts and conclusions of law, and that the commission finally review the special master's report and recommendation and either adopt, reject, or modify the report and recommendations. I will be glad to answer any other question, any questions you may have about this. We're on a short timeframe. The Circuit Court has indicated that we need to report it by November 22nd, and the request is that you approve Option 1.
Move approval of Option 1.
One second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Option 1. Commissioners, I had raised with the city attorney during our meeting a question that I thought, I was almost certain that when we ran for office, we signed an affidavit that attests certain things that were duly qualified, so on and so forth, and was surprised to see that the Supervisor of Elections Office isn't the entity that sort of goes through this process and certifies, at which point he made me aware that a number of cities, I guess, have established processes that when the question is raised, there's a process in place that then sort of litigates or arbitrates the issue towards some sort of reconciliation, some agreement. But it did strike me that the Supervisor of Elections Office, it seems, is the organization that certifies that we're duly eligible to run for office. We sign affidavits there, and that that wouldn't be a good enough process. City Attorney, I don't know if you had anything else to add to that, but to me, it seems that this is the appropriate step to take, given what you disclosed around them not being the entity that does that actual work.
They do not, in fact, do an investigatory process. So it's a separate provision in Florida statutes, as well as our provision of the charter that deals with the issue, and of course, the signing of the certification, qualifying certification, might be introduced as evidence in a particular situation.
Commissioners, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Maddox out of the chamber. Commissioners, we're now on to the section of the meeting for un-agenda speakers. Are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we have several speakers. The first is Erwin Jackson. As he comes forward, I'll remind him and other speakers that we would appreciate their name and address for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes for his or her remarks, and there is a light just to the left of the microphone that will start green and then turn yellow and then red, but I'll also remind you at your three-minute mark.
Commissioners, I've given you a handout, which will, are the documents I'll be referring to here. I think that most of you know that my wife and I have raised two adult sons. We're very proud of them, as I know you are of the children you've raised. As parents, we've tried always to teach our children that it's very important to simply tell the truth. Unfortunately, Scott Maddox has never learned that simple message. Every commissioner knows where their home is, except Scott Maddox. Even I know where he lives, outside the city, in a million-dollar estate at 104 Meadowwood Court. In order for him to run for the City Commission, he needed only to be truthful and move his family into the city. Unfortunately, he believes that he makes the laws, but as a city commissioner, he's not required to follow them. Therefore, Scott chose to lie to the voters and hope that a pack of attorneys could convince us that he and his family really reside in a rental office space at 510 North Adams Street. I think we learned last night a few lessons. One is that if a politician continually lies to the voters, he or she will ultimately be rejected. Scott lied when he signed a candidate oath claiming he lives at 510 North Adams. He lied when he signed a City of Tallahassee oath claiming that he's a resident and qualifies as an elector of the City of Tallahassee. Scott told these lies for the simple reason that he needed to in order to run for City Commission. In contrast, when Scott signed a cash bond to gain the relief of a family member from the county jail, he truthfully reported that he and his family lived in the big house, 104 Meadowwood Court. On October 10th, 2016, after claiming he lives in the city for four years, he and his wife advertised they were having a huge, quote, "estate moving sale" at their big house in Meadowwood Court. Scott, I only have to ask, why would you have a moving estate sale from a house that you say is vacant for the last four years, outside the city limits, when you profess to voters for four years that you live on Adams Street? Scott's wife knows where they live, in the big house in a county. That's where you'll find her entertaining her friends. The picture up here is a picture of Scott's house, his wife, and their friends, but not in the office building on Adams Street, but the big house in a county. Commissioners, I am suing Scott Maddox and the Leon Canvassing Board, not the City Commission. I, in Sancho's, was given an opportunity.
Excuse me, your time is expired.
To spend county money. In just summary, he had an opportunity to spend county money. He made a decision to not waste his funds.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I encouraged his commission to require the city attorney to.
Mr. Jackson, your time has expired.
No longer be involved in his legal action and save the money of the taxpayers. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Wilson, and she will be followed by Barbara Hoagland.
Hello and good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Wilson. My address is 1650 Airport Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Office of Governmental Affairs for Florida State University. I'm here to pledge our support for the Rogers family in finding a preventative solution to student drinking and driving. We fully believe that extending parking periods and decreasing towing and ticketing times will allow students to find alternative transportation methods and to return to their own vehicles the morning after. Thank you, and we hope that together we can make this difference in protecting our peers and community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Next is Barbara Hoagland. And that's the last individual for whom I have a speaker for, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Barbara Hoagland. I live in 907 Governor's Drive. I'm here about a proposed hotel, which is located, will be located directly behind my house. And actually, I had attended a pre-application conference last month about it, but I was here two years ago when the property was originally, site plan was proposed for Chewy's and the relocation of Good Body. So the aerial that I just gave you, the large street, is Apalachia Parkway, and then the other street on the other side of the red area is Lafayette Street. So I was here two years ago asking, when site plan was being considered, that to please consider a buffer between the commercial area and the residential area. Since that time, Good Body Lane's been rerouted and Chewy's has been built, but the western portion of the property, which is the one that is directly across from me, is still vacant. And it appears that what the plan is, is the hotel will take that piece, plus where Genghis Grill is currently, to have a hotel there. And I know it's consistent with the zoning, and I know it's consistent with the comp plan, but I'm hoping there's still some avenue for some relief to the residents. I'm really concerned about the impacts of the multimodal district, because what seems to be occurring, when you look at other developments that have been occurring in there, there's a terrible destruction of trees, and the trees make such a good buffer between the commercial and the residential. And the code kind of puts us in a rough position of going to the developer to ask for them to do a deviation to try to satisfy some of our concerns, which would be saving the trees. And I think the trees are really so important to Tallahassee. They are what makes Tallahassee Tallahassee. So, you know, why, if I go to the developer, why would the developer care that my view has gone from trees to the parking lot and their four-story building? But I hope that the city cares. When Genghis Grill property was initially developed, it was, there was a berm and existing vegetation was maintained, and I'm hoping that when the site plan is approved, that that berm will remain and that the one will occur on the undeveloped property as well. The sidewalk is an issue because that would be cutting down a lot of the screening for my property. So I'm hopeful that you all will be able to maybe encourage the staff to work with the developer to do that.
Excuse me, your three minutes have expired.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Commissioner Richardson.
Ma'am, ma'am, can I ask you a quick question? Are you all on the south side of Lafayette?
Yes.
Across from the development in Myers Park?
Actually, my property, I've put a little red dash line around it. It's 907, so it's directly across from the, and with my house just, I have a wall of windows on that looking out to that area, so that's really kind of my main.
Okay. And under the current development, there would be no, there is no proposed buffer?
No, it'd be, I believe, a sidewalk and then parking up to the hotel.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Mr. City Manager, is it possible that staff can maybe get with the homeowners association? Do you all have a homeowners association?
We do, it's Woodlands Drive.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Very active homeowners association.
Heard of them.
Is it possible that we can have staff get with them and see if something can be worked out to address this issue?
Yes, sir.
Back in the corner, Wayne, why don't you raise your hand?
Oh, yes.
Because I know he's been shaking his head this way and then this way, and I think he wants to work with you to try to solve that problem.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller.
Can you introduce each other?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Miller.
Well, actually, I had spoken with Ms. Hoagland before and came to see this property, I think, yesterday, and then Wayne was kind enough to come in my office, and we sat and looked at the site plan and some pictures of the area. And if you want to come up and, do you want to come up and share what we discussed yesterday?
I want to also add that I don't know how much, you know, St. Augustine is a canopied road, and I don't know whether, how far into town that goes and whether it becomes Lafayette Street's included in that, but the fact is that right here, from basically the Chewy's site all the way down to the CSX Railroad, where we have built a tunnel, it's a nice canopied roadway right now, partly because of the berm that was left behind the Genghis Grill, and I think that the idea is to just continue to use that berm. So I'll turn it over to Wayne.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. I have met with staff actually before this, before today, as well as following up again today after conversations I had with Commissioner Miller yesterday. We have said all along that the buffer along Lafayette Street is very, very important. Several commissions before you, there was the Lafayette Streetscape Plan that was adopted. We are trying to follow that to a T, even if it does require deviation for the site plan, so that is something staff will absolutely push. They have assured me today that they are looking at every opportunity to maintain that existing buffer there, the hill, the berm. Everyone sees value in that. Sidewalks are still very important in our community. We believe we can have both. We can believe that we can put sidewalk up to the back of curb. It will have to be an eight-foot-wide sidewalk. It could maybe have a foot or two-foot-tall vertical wall adjacent to the sidewalk that cuts into the berm, so we're not clearing out the berm. But yes, that berm and the landscaping along that corridor is very important to staff, so we intend to try to maintain it the best we can.
So Wayne, it's clear to say that you're feeling the berm?
I'm feeling the berm.
I couldn't let it go.
Right on, Commissioner.
Too soon. Too soon.
Really?
Too soon. Big too soon.
So Wayne, I just wanted to make sure, you know, we went over some of this, and just really consider the quality of what you're taking down. And Commissioners, I was going to share a few comments with you right after this on sharing of ideas, because you've heard me mention the urban forest plan before, and the whole idea of an urban forest plan in my mind is that we pick and choose and pick and choose and pick and choose, and this is an opportunity where we can choose to leave green space and rearrange where the green space is found on the site, possibly trade the islands for the green space by the road. But, you know, I'd ask you to please try to move the sidewalk on the other side of the berm, because it just is, you know how old roads kind of, like, well, I want to say the Natchez Trace, because that's historic, but Micasuki and all these old, old roads, they literally were worn down into the ground, and so have original ground on the side. Well, you see that right there at the site, and it's pretty historic, not to mention the fact that I'm surprised they're not finding artifacts all over the place over here, since it's so close to the De Soto site. But you see that, you get that old feel, and I just hate to disturb that and the vegetation that's growing up there, because I think that the best quality vegetation on this site is right close. site is right closer to the road. So please try to see what you can do with the sidewalk and maybe take it off the edge of the road.
Absolutely. So the applicant has submitted a pre-submital. That's what we're basing our comments on. They seem to be very reactive to what we are saying to them. It's my understanding they're going to try to submit for a formal site plan review this week, so we should be able to get pretty close to a final answer next week.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you for your comments.
Wayne, if you would maybe exchange phone numbers or something, so you can keep her informed. Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, I'm out of order, and I apologize. I do want to share one thing with you.
Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson, we're not going to be able to do that.
The appellate court has just ruled in our favor.
I understand.
Which will affect 13.05. I'll be more than happy to work with the city to do something.
We've taken action on that.
This is just tonight, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No further speakers.
Commissioners, we're now in sharing of ideas. Commissioner Miller.
Well, basically, you heard what I had said to you before. I'm in the process of investigating, along with the folks that had the meeting in the summertime, the young girl that put the meeting together on an urban forest plan potential. And I've asked for a few things from our GIS staff, and I hope that sometime in the future, maybe I could have a couple of minutes at the retreat to go over basically the concept and just to see what you think, and by that time, be able to explain it a little better than I'm prepared to do at this exact moment, so.
It's okay with me.
That's good. Commissioners, other sharing of idea items, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two that are related to Veterans Day that I'd hope we'd consider. We don't have to make a decision on them tonight, but if need to bring it back, we can. But the first one is, at our golf course, at Highleman Golf Course, we currently have a discount for senior citizens that golf. I'd like us to consider a discount for active-duty military and first responders, to encourage them to golf and to give them a discount. I received a request from that from a citizen, and I think it's a good idea. Mark Corbett sent that. The second one is, a citizen has sent me pictures of a bus stop next to the new VA clinic, and it doesn't have a shelter or a bench at that bus stop. And so we continually have veterans that are going to take advantage of medical services there that are standing out of the elements, and I'd like to get that corrected.
I appreciate you bringing up particularly the piece on the infrastructure, because the commission gave direction quite a while ago around the proliferating of apparatus, whether it be benches, seats, also sheltering at some of our stops, particularly in some of the more critical areas where we have elderly folks that tend... Or located next to grocery stores was another one that was mentioned. It'd be probably appropriate to bring back a little bit of an update on that as well. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, was it my understanding that that was something that you... We wanted to get the stop established? Because it seems like I remember in your presentation, you indicating that we would be looking at putting a shelter at those two stops by the...
Yeah, it's definitely planned. Obviously, it's a new route to stop there. But we'll bring you back specifics, and it should be up really soon.
I'll co-sign also the request for information, particularly the financial data and some input from staff on the golf course piece of it. Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner.
Commissioner Maddox, the request for Highleman was what again? Would you say that one more time?
To offer a discount similar to what we offer for senior citizens to active-duty military and first responders.
For a senior citizen discount, do we have a limitation number of emails we get from anybody on a singular day? Do we do anything like that? Because I'd like to consider that.
Ass.
Maybe we could raise the price a dollar per email.
Yeah, right. Per Gmail? I think that's wise.
Per capitalized words.
Did you get that, Sean? Nothing, never mind. Commissioners, tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow evening, and all-day Friday, and Friday evening is the football game, you're going to... You might see around town a limited number of sailors. They are from the USS Florida. They defend our country admirably, and they... When they go out, they go on six-month runs. And they are in port, and they have been invited by Florida State University to attend a football game, and they're being treated to a couple of days of our hospitality here in Tallahassee. So if you see them, thank them for their service. They'll be wearing their sailor whites, I'm sure, or whatever sailors wear now when they go out. And it... I think it's incumbent upon us to recognize them and thank them for their service.
Great. Thank you for sharing that, Commissioner. I had a manager wanted to bring up that, and I'm not sure if it's the commission or if this is a blueprint thing, but repeated issues that parents have raised about the playground that we put down by Railroad Square of not being any shade cover whatsoever. And, you know, that's kind of the issue with anything new, especially between Cascades Park and there, is that there's not a lot of vegetation that has grown up to create any shade. The good part is, we're entering the season where it shouldn't be so bad to have sun. But just want to raise again for staff's consideration, at the appropriate time, that we look at what we're doing in this regard, because in that location, there isn't even sort of planted trees that look like they're going to grow up. So it looks like it's going to be permanently exposed. And we've kind of got this shooting theme already through the park, over the bridge with these shooting awnings. As a way to tie that in, that might be something to consider. Love to hear back from you all on that.
Yeah, there's a substantial shade structure over the playground equipment of Lafayette Park.
Yep.
Yeah, that works quite well, so maybe we could look at that.
Commissioners, anything else?
One thing I forgot to mention that I wanted to... That we recently, Commissioner Nancy Miller finally turned 40 and had a recent birthday, and I wanted to say happy birthday, Commissioner.
Happy birthday, Commissioner.
You already sang happy birthday.
Commissioners, the city attorney has alerted me that we actually will need to go back and revisit a previous action we took. Commissioner Maddox, you abstain on this. City Attorney?
We do have an order that's been issued by the First District Court of Appeal reversing the trial court granting of a stay so the city could conduct its own proceeding and requiring the Circuit Court to immediately hold a hearing on the post-election contest that Mr. Jackson has presented. So certainly, the city attorney is not going to recommend that we don't follow the order of the First District Court of Appeal. So the effect of that will be that the process that was approved by you and I on 13.05 will not be followed, and we will comply fully with the Circuit Court... I mean, the appellate court decision made this afternoon.
Commissioner Miller.
Now, exactly. My question is, why can't we concurrently just go along? Because it seems like there's something lacking in our definition of our protocols here. And I guess, should this just go ahead and run concurrently with whatever's happening there?
Well, I think we were able to proceed on our separate process to be in compliance with our charter based on the Circuit Court's order staying the case that had been filed. Now, that... The appellate court has said that the Circuit Court erred in staying the case, and they need to immediately do a hearing, whether that's within the next few days or the next week, certainly will be up to the Circuit Court's interpretation of what immediate means in that regard. But our provision in our ordinance... I'm sorry. In our charter, always gave us the authority to make that decision and subject to review by the court. So the court was always involved in that, and that's what the original order dealing from with the Circuit Court, what they were trying to do were mesh the two. I think as a practical matter, we'd be doing duplicative and maybe contrary processes if we continue to try to do a hearing at the same time. The Circuit Court is going to be bound by the District Court to move forward with an immediate hearing.
Commissioner Ziffer. I'm sorry.
One more question. Has this issue been through our... Everybody okay out there? Is this issue been through our ethics panel, our ethics committee?
This particular issue, I'm not aware that our ethics officer here... I don't think this particular issue has been filed with our ethics office or the state ethics office.
All right.
Commissioner Ziffer.
If I can make two points. The first one is, we voted on doing this with a very, very tight timeframe.
Yes.
So even if we decided, let's say, to continue it, we're no longer under that timeframe, because the court ruled that they're going to make the decision for us. And so at the very least, we wouldn't be under that rush situation. So my recommendation would be, and I'm not sure, do we just make a motion to rescind the... What do you suggest we do at this point?
I don't think any further action is necessary. It's given that...
But you're notifying us you're not going to do it, so.
Yes, certainly, I'm not going to move forward. Now, there... We didn't have any process in place to deal with that charter provision, because we'd never had it directly sent to us. So one thing that I tend to do is, as this case plays out, to see if there is still any opportunity to reconcile the requirements of the state statute with the charter. And if so, come back with a specific commission policy for dealing with that in the future. I think now, with the court having ruled and directed that the stay be lifted, the effect of that is really to suggest to the Circuit Court that the Circuit Court had no authority to give us time to do our own process.
So no action is required, Commissioners. The city attorney has informed us that he will not follow the motion passed and will keep us posted on the status of the case. Commissioner?
Just wanted to let you know that...
I said Commissioner, I mean treasurer clerk.
Thank you. The ethics officer advised me that in response to Commissioner Miller's question, that the complaint was brought to them that it was not under the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board and was referred to the Division of Elections. If there's anything further you need, she'll be available to you at whatever time you need to talk to her.
Got it. Perfect. I see this group of young ladies in the center. Are y'all representing anyone or just coming to check us out? Florida A&amp;M. Very good. Well, welcome. You caught us on a short meeting day. Lucky you.
Lucky you, yeah.
Commissioners, if there's no further business, we stand adjourned.